I'd like to call it order. Meeting of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees of Thursday, May 2, 2024. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Soul.
Thank you. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting, and we'll start with the President's report. First, I would like to read a proclamation announcing May as Bike Month in the Village of Riverside. Bike Month proclamation, whereas the Village of Riverside will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2024, and whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Riverside's scenic beauty, whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Riverside and community visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. Whereas Riverside's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing health, transportation, economic tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, grow the economy of Riverside by attracting tourism dollars, improve traffic safety, support student learning outcomes, and reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our roads. And whereas municipalities, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling through the month of May 2024, and whereas these groups, along with the Village of Riverside, are also inspiring bicycle tourism and be around to attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. Whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, J. Douglas Pollak, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Month in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance. Signed this second day of May 2024. One of the groups that supports bicycling in Riverside, one of the many groups in town, is a grassroots group, may I call it, called Riverside Ride. He was promoting get-together rides, and I would like to introduce Valerie Kramer, who is one of the organizers of that group, to address the board.
Hi. That speech, I couldn't have written anything better. That was great. Thank you. I'm Valerie. I am resident of Riverside, and I just started a new group, Ride Riverside. And we are about promoting bicycling, just like having social rides, but also the advocacy side of things, of improving our bike facilities in Riverside. And we have monthly rides, so it will be the second Friday of every month. And the one that's coming up is on May 10. It's on Friday, and it is at 6:00 PM. And just before the ride, at 5:30, we are going to have something special for Bike Month. We got a small grant from the Act of Transportation Alliance to help us have some musicians right before play music that's bike-powered, so actually having somebody on a stationary bike pedaling to provide amplification. So it will be really fun. So that's at 5:30, and then at, sorry, at 6:30. And then we will have our ride around Riverside. So I will be posting the route on all the social media, and I hope to see a lot of you guys there. And it's totally family-friendly, slow pace, about four or five miles, just in Riverside. So it's good for the whole family.
Thank you. And Trustee, Trustee Marsh Azga, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that you've put into this. And just to clarify, the rides are regularly meeting at the train station platform. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And this time, they normally start at 6:00?
Yes. Okay. So yeah, so 6:00, sorry. And 5:30 will be when we have a little bit of music.
5:30 on the 10th of May?
Yeah, just special for Bike Month.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. And look for Riverside Ride on social media if you want more information.
Yeah, we're on Instagram, RideRiversideIL. Facebook is our, our Facebook group is called Ride Riverside. We also have a website, ridereverside.org. And this is all very grassroots. Just, we have no ulterior motive besides people having fun in Riverside, but then you get the side benefits of people going out for dinner in Riverside right after a ride, and promoting the businesses in Riverside. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. And yeah, this is another example of what a great bicycle community this is. You know, two weeks ago, we were receiving a donation from the Riverside Junior Women's Charity for our bicycle repair station. We have a bicycle repair shop in town. So bicycling is a big deal in the Village of Riverside. So thank you. I have any other comments from the board? Thank you. I have another proclamation to read in the same vein in terms of environmental benefits. It is a global, global Big Day proclamation. So I will read the proclamation and then tell you a little bit more about what Global Big Day is all about. Whereas Global Big Day is an annual event organized by the Cornell Lab of Ornithology in which bird watchers from around the world come together to document as many bird species as possible in a 24-hour period. Whereas Global Big Day, held annually on the second Saturday in May, provides a unique opportunity for people around the world to come together through the shared love of birds. And whereas Riverside's natural areas hold a vibrant tapestry of life with countless species sharing our village. And whereas understanding and appreciating biodiversity is crucial for environmental health and human well-being. And whereas citizen scientists and bird enthusiasts of all ages and abilities are encouraged to participate in Global Big Day by spending time observing and recording birds in their local communities. And whereas these collective observations contribute valuable data to scientific research, helping to monitor bird populations, track migration patterns, and identify conservation needs. And whereas by participating in Global Big Day, we foster a deeper connection with nature and promote the importance of bird conservation. Whereas the Displanes River Corridor in Riverside is designated by the National Audubon Society as an important bird area, offering food and shelter to migrating birds. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Village Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim May 11, 2024 as Global Big Day in Riverside, Illinois. Signed this second day of May 2024. So what is Global Big Day and what will be going on? I'm going to go out of order in terms of events here and skip right to May 11, 2024. On that day, we will celebrate Global Big Day. There will be a bird-watching walk beginning at Riverside Public Library at 9:00 AM and lasting till 11:00 AM. Free native plants will be given away by the Water Tower from 9:30 AM to noon. U of I Extension Table on Gardening to Support Birds and Information to Help Identify Birds, hosted by the Riverside C4 and Landscape Advisory Commission. Also on May 11, Zap Conservationists in Action Program from Brookfield Zoo, Chicago, from 10:00 AM to noon at Centennial Park by Water Tower, which is 10 Pine Street. Activities include exploratory activities, guided bird-related crafts and games, and cleanup tools to help make a great place for our feathered friends. Parks and Recreation Program for Global Big Day will be from 10:30 AM to noon. You can make a birdhouse, bird feeder, binoculars, and bird mask, and finish with a scavenger hunt around the water tower. There is a $5 registration to cover expenses. So that is Global Big Day, May 11. There's more information on our website for anyone who wants to follow up. Hope everyone can participate in one way. Other upcoming events, May 4, there will be a wildflower walk from 10:00 AM to noon. Those interested should meet at the Scout Cabin located at 417 Fairbank at 10:00 AM. That is hosted by the Riverside C4 and the Landscape Advisory Commission. On May 10, 2024, our Parks and Recreation Department will host a Family Bingo Bash, 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Registration is required. It is $5 per person. Upcoming meetings of the village. All meetings will take place in the Riverside Town Hall, 27 Riverside Road. It all begin at 7:00 PM, and they include May 8 Economic Development Commission here in Room 4, May 9 Preservation Commission here in Room 4, May 13, also in Room 4, Riverside TV Commission, May 13 Sesquicentennial Planning Committee upstairs in Room 22, and May 14, the Landscape Advisory Commission will have their regular meeting, also in Room 22 here at the Village Hall. And that concludes my President's Report for this evening. Manager Francis.
I do not have a report this evening.
Now's the time for resident comments. If any resident wants to address the board on a topic that is not on the agenda, agenda items will be addressed as we go through them. But if something, anyone wants to address the board on non-agenda, now's the time. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to talk about.
Thank you, President Pollak. My name is Mary Robb Clark, and I am here tonight representing the Riverside Township Lions Club. And I'm here to announce the 2024 Person of the Year. So I'm proud and honored to say Janice Foley, head of the Riverside Public Library, is the 2024 Person of the Year. Under her 30 years of leadership, the library has evolved into a valued community organization. She navigated the library through renovations, COVID, and recent book challenges regarding book bans. She is the face of the library at community events such as the farmer's market, holiday stroll, and the Fourth of July Parade. There are many new people coming into town with limited English skills. Janice came up with the idea to put iPads with language translation at the checkout desk in order to communicate better. Janice has made the library a warm, welcoming place for everyone. Please join me in a round of applause for Janice Foley. Are there any questions? There'll be a dinner in the fall at the golf club. You'll have to, we don't have a date for that yet, but there'll be signs all around town and Facebook postings. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well-deserving. We have one of the best libraries in the western suburbs, and Janice Foley is a big reason for that.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Thank you. No one else from the audience to address the board on non-agenda items? We'll move on to our consent agenda. Clerk Soul.
Approved voucher list of bills, May 2, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, April 18, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes, May 2, 2024. Review and File Department Reports, Finance, March 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Police Pension Board Special Meeting, January 18, 2024. Planning and Zoting Commission Regular Meeting, February 28, 2024. Parks and Recreation Board Regular Meeting, March 18, 2024. And Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, March 27, 2024. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order for a not-to-exceed amount of $195,793.97 to core construction for the repairs to Fire Station 2, and a resolution to change the Illinois Fund's principal authority for the Village of Riverside.
Thank you. Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing done, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent?
Make that motion?
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Marsh Azga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Department, Board, and Commission reports. We have a report from Clerk Soul on our ad hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee update. Clerk Soul.
Good evening. So the Sesquicentennial Planning Committee, otherwise known as Riverside 150, has been very busy since we held our first meeting in December of last year. Tonight, the committee would like to provide a brief update on their activities, as well as request board approval on a few items. So if you don't mind, I'll go over a couple of our updates first, and then we'll get into items that we need some direction on. So the first item, which you can see up on the board, is the Riverside 150 logo. So with the help of Assistant Village Manager Monroe, the committee was able to formally design and adopt a logo. The logo shares the same foundational elements found in the current Village of Riverside logo. You'll see that the green leaves are now gold. You'll see celebrating 150 years on there, and you'll see mixed colors in the outer rings. The normal color is just blue. The committee has also begun developing a 2025 calendar of events. We're actually partnering with the Historical Commission to publish a Riverside by the Decades themed calendar, including all Riverside 150 Village and Community Events. The calendars will be available for sale for the 2024-2025 holiday season, hopefully beginning at the annual holiday stroll. The committee is also working with the Parks and Recreation Department to coordinate a weekend full of events from August 7 to August 10, 2025, branding it as a homecoming weekend. The weekend's tentative plans may include the final, the third and final Parks and Recreation Concert Series event, a homecoming party at the train station, and potentially a commemorative golf outing and brunch. The committee has also begun working with the Riverside Schools. So currently, the committee has begun conversations with School District 96 and Superintendent Ryan Toy to develop a fourth or fifth grade project-based learning proposal related to the villages incorporation. This would be in lieu of a current grade-based assignment, not to burden teachers in the schools. The committee is also engaged in preliminary discussions with the school district's music and theater programs to reinvent the Riverside Centennial pageant from 1975 at the bend in the river. We're actually currently looking for the musical score, so if someone in town has a recording of that, that would be greatly appreciated. But we're working to figure that out. The last major update that I have is that we're currently evaluating fundraising and public improvement opportunities. So with the village board's approval tonight, the committee would like to work with the Public Works Department to implement a street sign replacement project in honor of Riverside 150. The project would also serve as a fundraiser by selling the village's old street signs. The committee adopted a new design for the street signs, which is on the board now. This new design includes a white background with black text, the word Riverside in all caps in the top of the center, which has the same font style as our current gateway signage, and then the village's branded tree branches with leaves coming in from the top corners. The current street signs are brown background with white text in Riverside at the top and in slightly different font. So before I jump into items requiring board approval, I just wanted to take a minute, see if Alex or Aberdeen had anything to add before we move forward.
Let me first jump in to thank Trustees Gallegos and Trustee Marsh Azga. They volunteered to co-chair our Sesquicentennial Committee, which we all appreciate very much. And do you all have anything to add?
The only other thing that the board should be aware of in terms of the activities that are under consideration are that we are also looking at doing a time capsule component to the festivities that would have different events in the months leading up to the, you know, encapsulation of the capsule. So something different every month.
And I would add that we chose black print on white because it's easiest to read for not just our residents, but also our visitors. And since we're now becoming more of a wayfinding type of community, we want it to be easier for anyone to come visit us.
Other trustees, have any thoughts on the sign and the logo? I think that's, the committees and staff are looking for your support to proceed with that, with the logo and with the sign.
Do we know the measurements of the signs?
So Director Tab is here to answer any questions as it relates to that. My understanding is there will be, similar to our current signs, there will be some slight variation depending on the length of the name of the street.
That's correct. Majority of all of our signs are nine inches tall, but the width of it is based on, you know, a Burlington's can be different than a Forbes, obviously.
The font size?
It'll all be the same.
Six inches?
Our current font is four.
Oh, really?
Hmm.
Is that, so that's what we have right now?
Yep.
And that's, as I understand, that's based on the industry standard for 25 mile-per-hour streets, which almost all of our streets are 25 or less.
Yeah, we have, Displanes is 30, but there's state signage at those two intersections, at 31st Street and 26th Street, which has the larger letters.
I will just note that the committee was very deliberate in opting to go for a standard street size, sign, street sign size, because there are custom configurations available, but we knew that those would all cost more. So everything needed to fit within the standard. And I think with bringing in the different design elements from our logo and branding materials, we were able to accomplish a lot in a very little space.
I think the other direction the committee's looking for is on the signed posts, correct?
Yes. So first was just the signed design. If we're okay moving forward with that, we can jump into the post discussion. So regarding street sign posts, this is actually something that the Riverside 150 Committee did not discuss. And pretty much, you'll see four options here. Any of the second, third, or fourth options are going to cost significantly more than the initial option, as you can see, and it would also increase the amount of time to complete this project. So Director Tab can provide more detail later on, but the option number one will take probably two summers to replace all the street signs. You know, if we were to find someone this summer, if it works out, great. And then next summer, finish things up. If we were to do options two through four, it's hard to tell how many, how long that would take. I think Dan mentioned that he would have one of his full-time employees complete that work as opposed to a seasonal summer employee, because it involves a lot more work. So I'll just go briefly, quick, through these four options, and then from there, the board, we can open it up for discussion. So option number one would be just to replace the signs. So we're taking the brown signs off, and we're putting the new white background signs right on the green post that the village currently has. And the village currently has green posts for its street name signs and also for all of its other signage. So stop signs and no parking signs and all that sort of stuff. Option number two, which would be $59,250, the last one was about $50,000, would be to replace the signs, as we said before, but also to paint the posts a different color if the board were to want it to be. I think we were talking about a black sign color or a black post color. So that cost is a little bit more than that. And then option number three would be to replace the signs and install new black U-channel posts. So same-style posts that we currently have, just in black as opposed to green. And that's $91,000 estimate. And then the fourth option would be to replace the signs and install a more decorative tubular black post, and that would be a higher cost of $113,000. And again, that's estimate, and none of these costs, two through four, include labor as well, which would be more, because it would be more spread out. So those are the four different options. Dan, I didn't know if you had anything else to say. Otherwise, we're just kind of looking for direction at the village board is wanting to replace the posts as well.
Trustees, I would note, I mean, this is purely an aesthetic choice here. The current signed posts are sufficient.
Satisfactory.
Satisfactory.
Structurally sound.
But they're, they're your standard, you know, construction, you know, posts. So they're not attractive or decorative, but they're also not very obtrusive either. But anyway, trustees, do you have any thoughts?
Just a question for Director Tab, I think probably. How often in the normal course do we have, do the posts themselves wear out and need to be replaced? Like, what proportion a year? Is it fairly small?
As far as, really, we only typically replace the posts when they get by a car. We try to repaint them once every 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
So low maintenance.
And if I remember right, just to add in, the costs in options two through three would just include the street name signs. So if we were to get a new post that doesn't incorporate the other posts that we have in town, which I don't know how many of those we have, but are stop signs and all of our other kinds of signs.
We roughly have 300 posts that contain street signs on them. We have an additional 600 that are random signs, stop signs, no parking signs. So we have around 900 posts in town that contain signage.
Sorry, and those, those are the green U-channel ones?
They're all green.
But your, your cost estimates are just for the street sign ones?
Correct. But as far as uniformity, if we paint the street signs and posts black, at some point, we may want to think about painting all of them black to be uniform. That's all. That's something we were to consider.
Oh, I was just going to say for the record that our commission or committee has not at all considered or discussed that. And I personally don't have a compelling need to change overall the street signs or the posts, you know, especially like in terms of conservation of materials and things like that. So it's, it's whatever the majority of the board would like to do, but I don't see a compelling reason to change them.
One more thing to note that I didn't really touch on before was from a fundraising standpoint. So assuming we have a successful sale of the village's old street signs, numbers two through four, or options two through four, would start to significantly cut into that as a fundraising opportunity for Riverside 150. So that's just something to consider as well.
Trustee Evans.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of number two, replacing signs and painting the posts. And I also appreciate the fundraising opportunity that it presents. Just wondering about the price point for the signs. Was there some thought that went into charging $300 for them?
I believe that was, you know, we made an estimate where we at least cover our costs from the material, the labor, the overhead, the administrative costs, but then also leave ourselves a buffer, which I can't remember how much of a buffer it was, as part of the fundraiser. So the goal would be, if we sold all of our street signs, that not only would it reimburse the total cost of this project, the total cost of this project to replace all of the street signs, but also to serve as a fundraiser for Riverside 150 events. So the concerts, the merchandise, all that stuff, I mean, that's a perfect world. You know, are we going to sell all 300-plus signs? I don't know. You know, I would assume Riverside Road will be really popular and maybe not some other streets, so we'll have to see. But that's the goal of where we set the price as well. And we've also explored selling them in kind of a bid fashion where maybe we put the more popular street names out for bid so we can get, you know, more of, more money for the more popular signs. So haven't finalized those details.
I just want to add that this is open to anybody, so anybody who lived here and wants some nostalgia from the street that they grew up on, it's going to be publicized all over the place, not just our current residents, but anyone who has any type of history with Riverside would be, of course, more welcome to bid in on those signs.
I think bidding would be more fair, because otherwise it would be first come, first served, and.
Right.
I want my sign.
Wait, which one do you want?
Sullivan.
Trustee there also wants her sign? Is that a trustee benefit?
You move me up, and there's so few perks, you guys.
You need to add, you want that sign and you're willing to pay for it.
The first part.
So let me ask Director Tab, I know in our Central Business District, we, did, we have some black-posted signs, correct?
Those are part of when the CBD was redone.
And are those just the wayfinding signs?
No, those are some street signs.
Or did some of the traffic, some of the streets, traffic, street signs have the black posts? They, do all of them in the Central Business District have the black?
Just Burlington.
Yeah, that, really, that's the only street that's been done to this point.
So that may be something that I wouldn't mind getting some information on if we just did the number four for the remaining Central Business District signs.
I would anticipate when we do Quincy and East Avenue, that'll solid suit.
Maybe it'll take care of itself.
Cool and corporate as part of the ITAP application.
Okay, good, good.
Just a question. Is there, is there a view that the green color is not desirable?
For the font?
No, for the, you were suggesting, I think, the option, option two, where we replace the signs and paint the posts a different color. I'm just, aesthetics are not, design is not my thing, and I think this is a wonderful design. I'm just pointing out there is green on the sign, there's green on the post. It seems like it works together, we could save $9,000.
Well, yeah, it's a matter of personal opinion. My personal opinion is the black looks better. But am I willing to fork over my own money for it? Probably not. You know, if we were buying them all new, yeah, I'd get the black ones, because the green ones tend to look more industrial to me. But is it worth spending money on?
You meant natural when you said industrial? No?
It seems like just the standard thing you see whenever you see these types of fence posts, you know, at Home Depot or anywhere else, they're always kind of the standard green.
I'm of the opinion that replacing the signs is good. I don't, I don't see a need to do any of the rest of it, even painting, I'm sorry, even painting them. Honestly, you know, it's funny, I actually just noticed a sign today and I was thinking that the brown blended in a little, a little bit as I was driving, but I love that the green blended in with the surrounding, you know, the surrounding greens. So I, my opinion would be to change the signs and just leave the posts alone.
I don't even know if the posts are in bad shape. Are they chipping?
I would say they're in varying degrees of, some are newer, because we've recently installed them, and some have probably have been touched in 30 years. I would anticipate those have a little bit of rust on them, but again, they're very low maintenance. They hold their color for a long time.
So keep the posts, paint the posts.
Consensus, keep the posts.
Keep the posts.
Keep the posts.
Great.
That would be my answer. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody else. Well, because I don't want to speak for everybody else.
Okay, so we have one more item requiring consensus tonight. So currently, this is regarding the budget. So currently, the committee's 2024 budget is $1,000. We haven't spent any of that money yet. It is anticipated that due to needing to book vendors for 2025 events and purchase new street signs, that we will definitely spend, will need to spend more than $1,000 this year. So staff is just recommending that the village's general fund special events budget subsidize these purchases. While it is the goal for Riverside 150's street sign project and other fundraising opportunities to reimburse the bulk of these expenditures, it'll just depend on the success of selling those projects and also getting other fundraising opportunities. So we're just looking for direction, if that's something that the board is supportive of.
I'm for it.
For sure.
I think you have full support for it.
If I may, just for clarification for budget administration, what's the ceiling? Are we looking at not to exceed $50,000, just so that as I'm processing payment requests, I kind of have an idea of what we're looking at? If we're looking at potential revenue of $90,000 in addition to the signs and everything, are we comfortable with saying that budget could go up to $90,000? Because then you're looking at reimbursement for the village for the signs and then also the booking of all the different vendors for the events. I just want to make sure that.
I would say, yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Up to 90?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
If there was a need to alter, we would have to come back to the board and get board approval, but at this point, I think we're comfortable.
You'll have to do a budget amendment at the end of this year or early next year because of, because we didn't anticipate that, but just so that there's awareness. Thank you.
We kind of skimmed over the logo. Did anyone have any, hopefully we skimmed over it because everybody liked it.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah, I thought so too. Very good.
Well, we selected the gold because it is 150, and of course, green would kind of be green space and it's wrapped around by the Blue River, so that symbolism was was explained.
Oh, that was very nice.
I kind of thought it was obvious, but okay.
But now that you say that, wow, very impressive.
We were very busy at our.
This took a lot of deliberation.
Well, I love, I love having the background on it. That's great.
And I love the fact that it respects our current logo, too. That's important. Very good. Staff, do you have the direction you need?
Yep, I think so.
Anything else from trustees on this matter? Thank you. There's no pending business, no new business. Any trustee reports this evening? Seeing none, we have no need for executive session, correct?
Correct.
So would someone?
What? No, I just blew my glasses. Sorry.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second, motion made by Trustee Gallagos, second by Trustee Marsh Ozga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and thank you all for attending.